Welcome to all of you tonight. We'll reconvene at the Board of Commissioners meeting, May the 23rd, 2023. It's good to see each of you here. And since we're reconvening, there'll be no public comment period tonight. Any adjustments or changes to the agenda?
Library. Did you want to change the library board appointment to next?
That'd be fine. If the board's in agreement.
We're moving it. We're moving it.
June. We'll do all three. Confirm there's three appointments.
There's three, there's three library board appointments that are up. Need one appointed at the next meeting for sure to keep the quorum. Is that right, Abby? So we can do one or all three next month.
Just do all three. You'll have about four days there.
And then the next term comes off in February. Is that right?
Right.
So.
Let's just do all three and we will so that Abby doesn't have to sit here all night. Thank you, Abby. Any other? We're going to pull. I've got two agendas. Close at the final.
You actually just got one.
I just got one. Yep. Any other changes, Ellen? Do we need action on that recommendation there? Okay.
Per the agenda.
Purpose of this meeting tonight?
Oh. Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion. Second. On paper. Purpose of this meeting is for us to receive. For the board and the public. To receive these little notes. Macon County Fire Department budget. Macon County proposed budget for fiscal year 23, 24. And with that, we will turn it over to Mr. Derek Rowland, the county manager, for his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. Thank you to everyone that came out tonight. Macon County Department heads that are present, county employees that are present. And as we get started here. I first want to say that. This budget every year. Is a production. The work, the amount of work, the amount of time, the amount of energy that goes into this budget. Is tremendous. It's tremendous. It's a heavy lift. And Mike and I were talking this morning. A lot of things get put on the back burner of this budget. I know for me, for instance, my email inbox looks like I've been on vacation. My yard looks like I've been on vacation. And things pile up, you know. It could not be accomplished, though, without a group effort and without everybody working together to make this happen. The first person I want to thank is Lori. Lori Carpenter is the most professional, most. She's a perfectionist. The, she's detail oriented and she, she edits this budget. I'll put this budget together and Lori, then Lori goes through, makes sure the number's right. Well, the first time I get it back, it looks like the book of Matthew. Y'all ever read where all the quotes of Christ are in red? It's marked up thoroughly where I, where I've, you know, missed something or stated a number wrong. But Lori catches it. And Lori plays a tremendous role in this budget process. Her, Lindsey Leopard, that's on her staff as well. I would like to thank Tammy Keizer and Abby Braswell, who are both here, sheriffs here. Any department heads I'm missing out there, any county employees. Jonathan had a huge role in the Sheriff's Department budget process. So it's a tremendous effort and I just want to thank everybody. The first pages of your budget book are the budget message in pages one through 40. And writing this every year, you know, it gives you a chance to go back and look at some of the accomplishments. That have went on in fiscal year 23. And looking back, we've done a lot of great things and you'll read through there, I'm sure. With the Great Grant, we're a $4.4 million grant coming to Macon County to expand broadband throughout. We sealed that deal in fiscal year 23. That's going to provide broadband internet service to approximately 2,700 locations across Macon County. We continue moving forward with commitment to public education. The Franklin High School project. We appropriated about 1.5 million in architecture fees to continue the design work at that Franklin High School main campus. To date, we have allocated 2.1 million on architect fees for the Franklin High School project. The town of Franklin, we have partnered with them on the skate park. I think we gave in total about $95,000 towards that $262,000 facility. That is going to be constructed on the Whitmire property that they recently broke ground on. We received wave two, this board passed a resolution to enable the county to receive wave two opioid settlement funding. As you'll recall, that's about 2.4 million that we'll receive over the next 13 years from 23 to 2036. And that will be in addition to the 3 million in wave one funds that we're going to receive as well. The recreation park master plan, we appropriated the funding to move forward with that and it is now underway. We expect it to be completed sometime in the summer. We broke ground at the 2.5 million middle school locker room facility this year. The Nantahala Community Library, we're started over there with the $260,000 renovation project. For that library and community center in the Nantahala community. We completed the revaluation. We broke ground at the transit facility, constructing the addition, the 1,200 square foot addition, as well as the awning project. We've had departments that have excelled. The senior services department will receive on May 31st, the Ernest B. Messer Award. And this is recognized as community-based organizations for helping, for addressing the needs of its older citizens. And this comes as a result of the COVID drive-through program that opened up to serve meals during the COVID-19 pandemic. From January 22 through November of 22, think about this, 28,000 meals were distributed to Macon County seniors through that drive-through program. And again, whereas the DSS and the senior services will receive state recognition for that. Lastly, but certainly not least, we've partnered with the town of Franklin through an MOU to expand the greenway. That's something we've talked about for years. Being able to connect that greenway to the recreation park there at Almond Drive. That's going to happen in the coming fiscal year, thanks to a partnership with the town of Franklin. So before we get into 24, I just wanted to highlight some of the things there that this board has played a large role in accomplishing in fiscal year 23. So let's get it right on end to fiscal year 24 budget. At $64,566,978 or a 9.3% increase over the prior year budget. The fiscal year 24 recommended budget is a direct reflection of the local economy. In, from 21 to 22, there was a 1.3% increase in population in Macon County. That's far exceeded that of the region at 0.2% during the same time period. This population growth, which began during the pandemic, has been accompanied by economic growth. Particularly in the real estate industry, construction industry, and in your travel and tourism industry. To give you an example, in 2021, during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, visitor spending totaled $390 million in Macon County for 2021. Now, if you compare that to 2018, before anybody had ever heard of COVID-19. 178 million was what was spent in visitor spending in 2018. That represents an 82% increase in visitor spending from 2018 through 2021. Undoubtedly, this has been a primary contributor and still is contributing to increased sales tax growth in Macon County. From 2021 to 2023, the average actual sales tax revenue that we have received. Has been 15.3% above prior year actuals. For the years 2015 through 2020, just to give you some idea, the average actual sales tax growth for those five years was 5%. So you're looking at a tremendous growth in sales tax revenue there, again, driven by that travel and tourism industry. Real estate sales countywide, moving into 23 through May, countywide, they've declined about 30%. But the average sales price in the Franklin area has remained largely unchanged, around that $290,000 mark. Average real estate sales price, while you look up into the Highlands area. Highlands real estate sales prices year-to-date through May exceed last year's by over 30%. Average sales prices in Highlands now over a million dollars. Another note there, so with that decline in the number of real estate sales, those average sales prices increasing in Highlands and staying largely the same in the Franklin area. Indicate that it could be as much of a supply problem as it is a demand problem in, related to that decline in overall number of sales. Construction and development, too, has continued to increase substantially into 23. And to give you some idea, in 22, we issued 720 building permits that had a total estimated value of $200 million. Now, how good is that? When you look back at 2018, again, 2018 was before anybody ever heard of COVID-19. We issued 430 building permits with a total estimated value of $70 million. So that just gives you some idea of how the development and the construction industry is following with this economic growth as well. Between 2022 and 2023, in that one year, there were 235 buildings that were added on to the Macon County tax rolls. Again, I want to make the point, this economic growth that we're experiencing here locally. Is directly reflected in increases to our primary revenue sources in this budget. This growth, while it has created economic development, it also has presented challenges. Inflation, although it's down, it's up 5% through March of this year, which is down from 8.5% through March of the prior year. So we see there, these rate increases from the Federal Reserve are having, accomplishing the intended effect of dampening inflation nationwide. And, you know, we're seeing that and it simply costs more to do business because of that. And while it is reduced, it still persists. Many people come into the area, as shown in this population growth, that means the demand for services are increasing. That means the demands for these men right here are increasing. And lastly, but certainly not least, the record low unemployment that we still have here in Macon County, around 3%. If unemployment's around 3%, you might as well say it's zero. Everybody that's, everybody that wants to work is working right now and that is creating competition among public and private sector employers. To recruit and retain highly qualified employees. We see it, the town of Franklin just completed a pay study this year. We have neighboring counties that are completing pay studies. So it has continued to present challenges as well as give us the revenue to address these challenges. Nonetheless, in doing this, in addressing these challenges in the coming fiscal year, we're going to maintain our solid financial position. At $42 million or approximately 68% of expenditures, fund balance in the general fund continues to provide us with a high degree of financial security. There has been no fund balance used to balance this budget. It leaves us well insulated from economic uncertainty. How does it do that? Through conservative revenue projections that are built into this budget, just like that are built into every budget that we provide every year. We will increase our commitment to public education. We'll increase operating expenses to the Macon County school system. We'll increase our operational funding to them for the first time in four years. We'll continue to provide public services to the citizens and visitors of Macon County. We'll continue providing those public services. We're going to continue providing them in high quality. And we're going to, this year, we're going to continue providing them at what will become the best price tag in the state of North Carolina. What am I talking about by that? Ad valorem property tax collections is the primary revenue source in the general fund budget. And as each of you are aware, fiscal year 24 is the budget that will immediately follow the general reappraisal of real property in Macon County. Again, this revaluation is not something that, this is something that is required of the county by the state of North Carolina. The 23 revaluation upon completion resulted in an increase to the Macon County tax base of 51%. Tax base increase from approximately 8.5 billion to 12.8 billion in fiscal year 24. North Carolina general statutes, the same ones that requires to conduct this revaluation. Require that in the year, in this budget, the one that follows the revaluation, they require the budget to list. List the revenue neutral tax rate. They do not require the budget to be balanced at the revenue neutral tax rate. Fiscal year 24 recommended budget, however, is balanced at the revenue neutral tax rate of 27 cents per $100 of assessed value. Or the lowest property tax rate in the state of North Carolina. The revenue neutral rate also, as required by general statute, contains a 1.62% growth rate. That growth rate is representative of growth in, of the average growth in the tax base from fiscal year 21 through fiscal year 23. Now, what impact, this chart here, before we go down, the chart at the top basically shows what's going on. Fiscal year 23 there, that top column, you had your $8.5 billion tax base. Your tax rate to, your tax rate on that was 40 cents per 100. That generated 34 million in revenue. In fiscal year 24, at 12.8 billion, to generate that same 34 million in revenue, you have .2657 per $100 of assessed value. And then when you put that 1.62% growth rate on that, .2657, it brings it to 27 cents per $100 of assessed value. Now, what impact does this have on the Macon County taxpayer, the revaluation? And essentially, it's this. Overall, property values increased 51%. If you're home here, let's use the first example, of $150,000. If you're home and the revaluation increased by 30%, then you got a $73.50 tax decrease. If it went up 30%. If it went up 48%, you got a 60 cent tax decrease annually. A 51% tax increase, a 51% increase would lead to an increase in your ad valorem property tax of $11.55 annually. This is the $150,000 house example. You can follow that down through the chart there for the other priced homes. But in short, it's this, if you're, if you're, the rate, if your property value went up around the average. You're either going to see a tax decrease or you might see a slight tax increase. But regardless, if you stayed in that 48 to 51% increase range with your property, then your tax impact is going to be minimal to negligible. So moving right along from that. Let's talk about the revenues in the general fund budget. The, at the revenue neutral rate of 27 cents per $100 of assessed value. Ad valorem motor vehicle tax collections is going to account for 53% of revenue in the fiscal year 24 budget. This is an increase in revenue of approximately 1.5 million over fiscal year 23. Now, as you can see here, this chart on the left, the revaluation only resulted, the application of the growth factor per the revaluation. Only resulted in $527,500 of that growth. An increase in sales tax collection percentage to 98.94%. I think that's up about .37. So .37% increase in your sales tax collection rate resulted in $123,800 of that increase. And the increase in your sales tax collection percentage is simply reflective of the tax office doing an awesome job. This board has, I think, you know, we're well aware, we have approved numerous software upgrades and purchased the pictometry. And the change finder software, along with the BiTech software that is, that is our new tax software. And these are paying off. These upgrades have reduced operating costs, they're producing more accurate data, and they played a huge role in the recent revaluation. And I couldn't be more impressed and Abby's here tonight. I'll compliment Abby and her department of the responsiveness and professionalism that the Macon County Tax Office has shown during this revaluation. A revaluation in any year is a heavy lift. And it is an especially heavy lift when you're talking about a 51% increase in property values. Following that, you had 2,100 appeals that this, that have came through this tax office. 2,141 appeals, approximately 1.4 billion in value was appealed. And of that appealed amount, 300 million of it was overturned through, through adjustments. After, after sitting down and going through this with property owners. So again, that's a tremendous, tremendous job by, by the tax office and a great job by Abby and her staff. Before we move to the next slide, let's talk about the last increase that is attributable to this 1.5 million overall ad valorem tax growth. And that is simply conservative budgeting. This is what you pay us to do. In light of the economic uncertainty that we had heading into fiscal year 23. Assessed value for real and personal property was budgeted conservatively at 8.3 billion. When we, when we made the fiscal year 23 budget, the, the revenue that we were collecting from ad valorem tax was based on an 8.3 billion dollar budget. During fiscal year, was based on 8.3 billion dollars in tax base. So during fiscal year 23, and we talked about it in, in previously, you had development continue to occur. Your, your real estate sales prices remained elevated all throughout the year. And they, they continued climbing at one point during 23. And what you had as a result of that, of that sustained high demand, was larger growth than we could have ever anticipated in the tax base. So the 8.3 billion dollars that we used to calculate the fiscal year 23 budget at fiscal year end was 8.5 billion. So that growth, that natural growth that would have happened regardless of the revaluation. It happened between 22 and 23. That growth at $200 million was resulting in us under projecting the tax base for fiscal year 23. There was simply more growth occurred than we projected. And that $200 million is going to, to account for that $870,195 increase in, in this revenue category. And it's just important to note that the, still, even with $1.5 million in this revenue source. This 870,000, that's, that's growth that's already occurred. This, this one, this 123,000 in tax collection percentage, that's something that happened. This is things that have already happened. So this increase in, in ad valorem tax revenue, in our most consistent revenue category, is not based, the 1.63, the 1.62%. 527,000 of it, as we're required to do by state statute, is resulting of a growth factor. That's what it's grown on average in the years leading up to revaluation. But the bulk of this increase is things that have already happened. And, and we were conservative in budgeting that. So that's natural growth that would have occurred whether the revaluation happened or not. So it's very important that when we talk about that $1.5 million increase in that ad valorem tax collection revenue, that we remember that. Moving on to sales tax. Sales tax is another primary revenue source. Ad valorem tax collections accounts for 53% of revenue in our general fund budget. Sales tax accounts for 22% of it. And at 14.1 million in the coming fiscal year, that's representative of a 1.9 million dollar increase over fiscal year 23. So what we have here is, again, it's another example of conservative budgeting. Although this 14.1 million that we've budgeted for fiscal year 24 is going to result in a 1.9 million dollar increase in revenue. If you'll look here, that 14.1 is the same amount that we're projecting here in the red. The red represents actuals on this line graph. So we're projecting to end, we collect sales tax three months in arrears. So we, at the time we project this budget message, March, April, May, June, we don't have those months. The latest we've received is through February. And so we have to take what we had through February, project the remaining months of fiscal year 23. And then use that to, to base your 24 budget off of. Well, what we have in 23 is this, year-to-date through February, sales tax is up 15%. That means every month, it's averaged 15% increase. I think the latest month, I think February, was actually 20. But the year-to-date average is 15%. So we plugged what we already had collected in sales tax revenue for the months through February. And then for those remaining months, we took fiscal year 22 actuals and we put a 5% growth on them for those remaining four months. In a normal year, in normal times, and I say normal, when I say normal times, I'm talking about everything from 2021 back. We would have projected a year-end amount and then we would have projected growth on top of that for the next fiscal year. So again, these, these are still not normal times. So we left it at that. We said, we're going to end fiscal year 23 with 14.1 million dollars. We're projecting no growth for fiscal year 24 in sales tax collections. So this 1.9 million dollar increase, again, is reflective of growth that's happened. This is reflective of what's going on in this economy right now, of revenue that's coming into this county right now. It's not banking on revenue for fiscal year 24. Again, this, I just want to make that point because this sales tax projection revenue, just like that ad valorem tax collection revenue. Is an extremely conservative revenue projection. Next, while we're talking about revenues, here you have your service fees. And these, these two red arrows here, you can see it better on your screen, are going to be the two revenue categories I'm discussing right now. Service fees are revenues generated from the services that we provide. These include our recreational fees, ambulance fees, your client's payments in health and social services, building permit fees, et cetera. At 4.2 million in fiscal year 24 service fee collections, this is representative only of a $19,000 increase over the prior fiscal year. And the only reason there's a $19,000 increase over the prior fiscal year is because you had a $90,000 increase in ambulance revenues. And that's because demand in EMS. because demand in EMS continues to climb. I think it's up eight percent over last year, which we will discuss a little bit more in a minute. But the thing I want to point out here is that this nineteen thousand dollar revenue increase, which is essentially flat with respect to our service fees, we're not banking on continued growth in, in building inspections. We're not going to, we're not saying we're going to continue, we're going to continue escalating and escalating in building inspections. All those revenue sources that are tied to the construction industry, to the development industry, we left all those flat. Because again, there's tremendous amount of economic uncertainty that's still prevailing right now at this time. Next, you have your intergovernmental revenues here in the green category. These are primarily funds that are received from outside federal and state agencies. You will see these intergovernmental revenues have a tremendous impact on your health department, your DSS, your transit, your senior services operations. This is where you'll see this revenue reflected on the expenditure side. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Nine point three million has been budgeted for intergovernmental revenues in fiscal year twenty-four. This amount is largely representative of a three hundred and eight thousand dollars, seven hundred, three hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollar increase over the original budget. And it, and it, this increase is due to an increase in Medicaid cost settlement funds in the health department. So at, at nine point three million, again, it's a three hundred and eight thousand dollar increase over the prior fiscal year. The reason for that increase is because you had increase in Medicaid cost settlement funding into the health department in the amount of five hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars there. Lastly, on revenues, let's talk about miscellaneous. We always talk about our fund balance, we talk about the financial security that it provides us, we talk about the independence financially that it provides us, the favorable interest rates that we receive because of it. And again, at sixty-eight percent of expenditures, forty-two point four million dollars, we have, we do have a nice fund balance. And that is the product of years of conservative leadership, fiscal responsibility, and continued fiscal responsibility with this board is the pro, is what that fund balance is made of. When you look at fund balances for, for, across the, the board, you know, for, for counties with expenditures of less than a hundred million dollars, the average fund balance is around thirty-nine percent. So that just gives you a, an idea of, of where Macon County is there in respect to fund balance. But this year, we're not going to, we're, we'll talk about it in a capital sense, but, but it's also going to work force in the operation, in the operating budget as well. It's going to generate one point six nine million in additional revenue. And our fund balance is simply, it's our, the fund balance is held in the North Carolina Capital Management Trust Fund, and, and the increase in this revenue comes as ironically, the increases to the federal fund rates. The same thing that's leading to this increase in revenue is the same reason that we're budgeting conservatively in our primary revenue sources. As, as the federal funds rate has increased, so has our interest on investments. So with that being said, just wanted to point that out. This one point six million dollar increase though, because it, excuse me, one point six nine million dollar increase in interest on investment earnings, it is tied to the economy. It is not a dependable revenue source. That's why it's stuck in a category of revenue called miscellaneous. Last year, to give you an example, we had a hundred thousand dollars budgeted in there. So as these rates continue to impact inflation, as we see inflation go from eight point five percent year-to-date twenty-three through March to five percent, or, or, excuse me, eight point five percent year-to-date twenty-two through March, and then fall to five percent year-to-date twenty-three through March, you gotta, you gotta be looking at the future of this revenue source. It ain't going to remain like that forever. As the rates start coming down, this revenue source is going to go away. So for that reason, we have, we've not tied any operating expenditures to this increase in revenue. We have recommended and have used it in this coming fiscal year budget to be tied to one-time capital expenditures. And, and just because, again, of the volatility of that revenue source as we move forward. So we, we hit on all the increases throughout all the revenue sources in the general fund budget, accounting for that five point five million dollar increase in revenue. And if you could, if I could sum the, the recommended budget revenue summary up, it, it's conservative budgeting meets sustained revenue growth. It is an example of what's going to happen in this budget. It is an example of what's happened in previous budgets, and it is an example of why we have continued to improve our financial position and continued to meet the demands that, that have this organization have been pressed with in response to increasing population and increasing demand. So now that we have discussed revenues, let's discuss the expenditures. We've discussed where we're getting the money. Now let's discuss how we're going to spend the money in the next fiscal year. The chart at the top of this page here, your general fund expenditures in your budget message will be discussed on pages thirteen through forty. The top of the page here, this chart provides a high-level overview of the sixty-four point five million dollars in expenditures by expenditure type. If you notice here, salaries and benefits, non-salary and benefit operating expenses, capital appropriation to education, we're going to get into all those, but this is overall budget by expenditure type where we're spending the money. The chart on the left illustrates the nine budget functions of the twenty-four general fund budget, basically how this money is going to be spent, is distributed here into these categories that are called functions. There are six functions in this pie chart on the left that are, that represent the services that Macon County provides. In addition, you have the education budget function here, which includes your current expenses and your capital outlay to the Macon County school system and the annual SEC appropriation. You have your non-departmental, that includes things like retiree health insurance, organization-wide workers' compensation, our property and liability insurance, and our contingency fund. Now, let's, let's break these down a little bit more. I've pulled out all the functions of this pie chart that are not related directly to the services that this organization provides. All that's in this pie chart right now, and all that's going to remain in this pie chart for these next few slides, is the services we provide. So as you'll see here, the, the, these, the, the six functions in this chart on the left, again, represents all the services we provide. They account for, this chart at the top here will show you, they account for seventy-five percent of our forty-eight million dollars in expenditures. And these, the, it's, it's very important to note here that, that this forty-eight million dollars in expenditures is, everything else is out of it. So what you're seeing now is the services we provide, and that is going to be the, when you're talking about the services we provide, I had the, the sheet with me right here, bear with me a moment. Let's just start with the general government. And, and, and as we're, as we're thinking about this, and these expenditures, this forty-eight million dollars, this is what all it covers. When the general government, you have the governing body, administration, human resources, finance, tax collections, tax administration, GIS and mapping, legal, board of elections, register of deeds, information technology, building and grounds, garage and fleet management. In your public safety, you have the sheriff, you have your courthouse security, you have your detention center in your jail, inspections and planning, EMS, emergency management, nine-one-one dispatch, fire services, animal control, forest service appropriation. In this transportation function, you have Macon County Transit, you have your annual contribution to the airport authority. In your economic development function, you have economic development, Cowie School, soil, Macon County Soil and Water, cooperative extension appropriation. Health and Human Services function, you have health, social services, veterans, VIA, juvenile partnership grants, senior services, housing. In your Culture and Recreation, you have your recreation department, contribution to your Highlands Recreation, and your library expenditures. So I, I say all that to say that this forty-eight million dollars covers a lot of stuff. The services that we provide touch a lot of lives and cover a lot of areas in Macon County. Another thing I want to talk about is that all of these expenditures in this forty-eight million dollars here, all of them are not county-funded expenditures, going back to that intergovernmental revenue source that we talked about on the revenue side. When you look at your Health and Human Services function there, Health and Human Services is fourteen point three million of that. So fourteen point three million dollars total, only seven, or seven point five million of that fourteen point three million in Health and Human Services is covered by outside revenue sources. When you look at your transit function, seventy-six percent, or one point three million of that one point seven million for transit, is covered by outside revenue sources. These two together total eight point eight million in expenditures that are covered by outside revenue sources. And again, we're talking about the services we provide. So when you look at that and you put that eight point eight million on that forty-eight million up there, go ahead and take that off of it, that's thirty-nine point two million in county-funded dollars that we're using to provide every service we provide in this county, from board of elections to collecting your taxes, to coming and getting you if you have a heart attack, to putting you in jail. So everything, everything, thirty-nine million dollars, that's pretty good. The, the chart at the top, again, shows the salaries and benefits. Salaries and benefits are just that. And at forty-nine percent of, of total expenditures in, in the, in the budget overall, that's right where a public service agency should be. These salaries are the salaries that encompass our twenty-four departments, some of which contain multiple orgs. Five hundred and eighty-four active positions are included in those salaries right there. Three hundred and ninety-eight full-time positions, hundred and eighty-six part-time positions. Chart at the top still, when you move right down to non-salary and benefit-related operating expenditures, this is everything we need aside from people to provide the services we provide. Everything we need outside of people and capital. And capital, as we'll discuss, is anything over five thousand dollars that has a useful life of one year or more. Outside of that, non-salary, outside of those two things, this is your expenses with your tools, your supplies, your computer supplies, your utilities, your training, everything. Bullets in the sheriff's department, toilet paper in the detention center, toilet paper in the courthouse, in the annex building. Everything from the, the soap you wash your hands with, to the, the augers you take out, to, to dig the pits for the septic permits, everything we cover is, is covered in those non-salary and operating expenditures, and that's twelve point three million dollars. You're talking about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar fuel budget that's in there, a million dollars in supplies that are in that twelve million, one point eight million dollars in contracted services, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in utilities are included in that twelve point three million, twenty-eight thousand dollars in travel and training expenses across the organization are included in that twelve point three million. Again, everything that we use outside of people and capital to provide the services we provide. Let's move on down to capital. Capital expenditures are those that exceed five thousand dollars and have a useful life of a year or more. This is your ambulance replacements in fiscal year twenty-four, improvements to our recreation facilities in twenty-four. We're going to have improvements to our heavily utilized facilities. We're going to be replacing critical IT network infrastructure in the coming fiscal year. So that is a summary of those expenditures by type. Again, thirty-nine point two million in county dollars. And let's, let's look at the big picture here. So when we take capital out of that, and this increase in capital is tied to a one-time capital expenditure replacement that we happen to receive this interest on investment revenue in this fiscal year that we could move forward with this capital expenditure, you take that out of the equation, you're left with your salary and benefits and your operating costs. So when you look at that, the increase in our operating costs, when you remove the capital increase from the equation, operating cost of what it takes to run this organization and provide the services we provide on a day-to-day basis has increased three point six percent from prior year. That's, to me, you look at five percent inflation, the increased demand, especially on our public service agencies, the, the things that we've had to do with salary to address and benefits, to address the, the issues that we're having with recruitment and retention and remain able to compete. In doing all that, the operating budgets only increased three point six percent over last year. And that's why I really wanted to boil this down, because when you start looking at this budget in pieces, and, and, and like this forty-eight million, you know, you see a sixty-four million dollar budget, okay, let's boil it down to what services do we provide? What is the county responsible providing? Okay, that's forty-eight million. And then of that forty-eight million, thirty-nine million of it's county-funded. So that's why I think it's very critical that we look at the budget like this and understand the different pieces that are in it. The middle chart here is, is representative of the general government function. So what this, what this is, is, is how it's laid out in your budget message. And I want to show you, this is to give you a visual. So this takes that blue pie and shows you what's going on in that blue pie chart for the general government function. Pages twenty through thirty-five of your budget message will look in-depth at each of these functions based on the expenditure types and show you what expenditure types have increased, and they will give you a detailed explanation as to why these expenditure types have increased within each of the budget functions here. Again, we're talking about the six functions that represent the services we provide. This last chart on the page, when you boil it down another level, we've talked about organization-wide here at the top, we've shown one general government, we've shown one function here in the middle, and then the last thing, when you look through the individual department budgets, remember, just like here, this is an example from the general government function of your tax assessment department. So the tax assessment, the four hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine total in salaries and benefits for tax assessment down here, in this tax assessment org, is going to be reflected in that FY twenty-four general government total salaries and benefits column on the middle. And then that general government salaries and benefits is going to be reflected in the organization-wide salary and benefit amount of thirty-one point nine million dollars. Same with the increases. I think there was about a twenty-four thousand dollar increase in, in the, in the tax assessment salary and benefits, or a twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollar increase in the salary and benefit for the tax office. But it's going to be reflected in the general government there, that's going to be reflected in the one point eight nine million dollar increase. So boiling it down to give you that visual, and now, it's not going to be color-coded. When you're going through individual departments in your budget book, they're not going to be color-coded like this. We pay hundred thousands of dollars for a financial software system that won't even print the color copy. So that's something, that's something that I, that I do to give me a visual, and I want you to have the same visual. Every one of these individual departments in each one of these six functions is laid out the same. The top portion of it is your salary and benefits. The middle portion of it is your non-salary and benefit operating cost, and always at the very bottom is your capital expenditures. So keep that in mind when you look through the individual budgets of these departments, keep in mind how it plays in to the function itself, and then how that function plays in to the bigger picture of the organization overall. All right. Let's first discuss the salaries and benefits. At one point eight million dollar increase, the, the salaries and benefits have contributed to the three point six, this increase has contributed to the three point six percent increase in operations from the prior year. In the fiscal year twenty-four budget will feature six new positions. You'll have an additional deputy position in the fiscal year twenty-four budget, and that will increase patrol to six per shift, and it will result in full-time law enforcement coverage in the Highlands and Nantahala area. Demand in the sheriff's department remains steady. Sheriff can tell you that, averaging approximately thirteen thousand, five hundred calls annually. And, and, and demand continues to increase, and we have heard, you know, many times, folks have come in here from the Nantahala community requesting the coverage over there. The sheriff has made that possible in his budget. Narcotics investigator will also be recommended in fiscal year twenty-four. Right now, you have one investigator that handles all the narcotics cases. Right now, you have one investigator that handles all the narcotics cases, and what that's resulted in is, is, you know, an extremely high caseload for this investigator, but it's also resulted in, um, having to pull other investigators from other areas of specialization throughout the department that have had to assist this investigator. It's, and it's contributed to increases in overtime and, and operating cost increases. Both of these positions, both of these positions are completely offset in the sheriff's office budget by reductions through operat- to operating expenses. So he created the capacity within his budget, within the expenditures that he already had, not capital expenditures either, operating expenditures, to make room for these two positions. And I think that's admirable, I, I think that's complimentary of the sheriff, and he's done a great job doing that. The primary, uh, reduction to his operating budget to fund these positions was from overtime throughout his budget. So he has, he has looked, evaluated where he, he, uh, needed that, and he's made it happen. So, uh, kudos to the sheriff for that. We're also going to add three social worker twos in fiscal year twenty-four. These social worker twos have been recommended in DSS to address the increased caseloads brought about by Medicaid expansion. Currently, uh, as of March of twenty-three, there's seventy-eight hundred Medicaid recipients enrolled across all program areas here in Macon County. DSS right now has eleven caseworkers that have an average caseload of seven hundred and ten apiece. Following Medicaid expansion, we anticipate an additional thirty-two hundred Medicaid recipients will come online here. This alone i- is going to create the, the need for, for additional positions. The best thing about these positions is that they're one hundred percent covered through increased Medicaid revenues that will also come as a result of Medicaid expansion. I've listed the one income maintenance caseworker three here. This position was approved by the Board of Commissioners in April of twenty-three, and while it is not new in fiscal year twenty-four, the full year salary and benefit impact of this employee will be felt in the fiscal year twenty-four budget. And, uh, this position's seventy-five percent covered by Medicaid revenue, and it will provide training to the new social workers coming on to deal with the increased caseloads from Medicaid expansion. Health Department recommending a full-time physician two to replace the current contract physician that is currently utilized by Macon County Public Health following the retirement of our contract doctor in the coming fiscal year. The primary purpose of this physician two position will be to fulfill the primary provider and medical director role for Macon County. Addition of the physician two position to public health, uh, at two hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred dollars will result in a ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollar net increase to the Health Department operating budget, because while that new salary's coming on, you have a hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollar contract physician rolling off. So that's a ninety-two thousand dollar net increase to continue. Again, it's going to be important coming up with Medicaid expansion. Um, the Health Department is going to have more clients as well through the programs that it offers. Um, employee health is a big piece of this as well, and of course, the medical director serving in that role for the Health Department, uh, that position is very important. The telecommunicator and animal control officer, these are not new positions, that they're not a net new position to the budget. Both of these were gained through, uh, through a tri- through elimination of another position. So in the Health Department, we res- we dissolved the animal, we dissolved the coordinator position that was a grade thirty to create an additional animal control officer in response to increased demand in animal services. When you look from fiscal year twenty to fiscal year twenty-two, the average monthly calls for animal control have increased from thirty-one to forty-seven a month. And we've heard that in here, people have came in here, animal control calls, the more people you got coming to an area, the more people you got living closer together, the more problems you got. My house is an example of that. So, um, the fire captain position, uh, the, is going to be dissolved in your emergency management, uh, budget function, and it is going to be, with the dissolving of this position, will create another telecommunicator position. Uh, demand for telecommunications, like everything else, for, for your nine-one-one telecommunications, like everything else, it's increasing as well. We saw it go up eight percent from fiscal year twenty to fiscal year twenty-two. In fiscal year twenty-two, um, our dispatch center handled forty thousand calls for service. So altogether, the, these reclassifications and, and new positions that we've discussed, when we're talking about county dollar, all this, two hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollar increase in county dollar. So that, that is, uh, a part of this budget and will, will contribute to that overall salary and benefit increase. Next, the ability to recruit and retain qualified employees continues to be a top priority for this organization. We had a CPI increase of five percent, which I've mentioned, a year-to-date through March. Unemployment has remained at around three percent, which is essentially zero. You have organizations that are a rocks throw away. Town of Franklin recently completed a pay study, and many counties, Jackson County completed a pay study following Macon County's pay study, and that was completed in twenty-one. So competition persists among these public sector organizations in recruitment and retention. Private sector, uh, you know, can nev- we can never compete with the private sector, but nonetheless, it's especially hard right now, um, when, when the private sector remains so extremely lucrative and, and is capable of offering higher wages, particularly in your areas, your construction workers, your healthcare, environmental health, and many counties, including Macon, are going to continue making adjustments, uh, in the fiscal year. The North Carolina League of Municipalities, uh, released their anticipated cost of living adjustment and merit increase survey results. Two hundred and sixty-six respondents statewide to this survey, eighty-nine percent of the respondents indicated they're planning on providing a COLA and merit adjustment in the coming budget. The average plan COLA for the western region per this survey was four point seven percent, with plan merit increases ranging from one point five percent to six percent. The Southwestern Commission, uh, our local council of governments here for the seven county western region, uh, published a, a study as well for fiscal year twenty-four indicating average COLA and merit increases for counties and municipalities in our seven county region to be three percent and one point eight percent respectively, three percent cost of living adjustment, one point eight percent merit adjustment. Remove the local level, go to the state level, you have the House of Representatives budget proposal includes a seven point two five percent increase for all state employees over the next two years. The, um, so that, the, the three percent cost of living adjustment and one, one and a half percent step there will total one point one million, right around one point two million in the coming fiscal year. The retirement contribution, retirement, uh, state retirement system is a pay-to-play system. The two point seven million dollar, uh, retirement, which is what we, uh, budget for retirement throughout the overall budget, will increase by a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars in the coming fiscal year. Health insurance, no increase. We, uh, adjust, uh, the underwriters did call for a two percent increase in employee contribution, however, ev- uh, ever since we have joined the North Carolina Health Insurance Pool in twenty eighteen, we have continued to have an awesome experience with that pool. I think market, market adjustment for health insurance rate, I think market increase right now is seven point eight percent. This two percent increase, we can handle easily from our health insurance reserve fund, that's what it's there for. Since we joined NCHIP in twenty eighteen, we've continued to have good years, build that reserve back up to over a million dollars. So because of that, uh, we're looking at no increases to the employee, uh, contribution for health insurance in the coming fiscal year. Before we move on from that, uh, cost of living adjustment step increase, I want to real quickly show you, um, what it's going to do. Big chart, lot of numbers, I've highlighted the ones we need to look at. Um, i- if you look here, there, these are fifteen positions that are listed on this chart. These fifteen positions represent all of these six budget functions, which we're continuing to talk, which we've talked about for the previous slides, we're still in, in the services we provide. So across all these budget functions, this column down here at the bottom, this is a very good, this chart is a very good representation. You could say this is an average, this is the average Macon County employee. So right now, the average Macon County employee at seventeen dollars and twenty-eight cents an hour, after the three percent cost of living adjustment, that's going to add an additional fifty-two cents an hour, following the, the cost of living adjustment. Then the step increase after that employee's been here a year will result in another thirty cents increase in the hourly rate. So that would, that's an eighty-two cent per hour increase for the average county employee, seventeen dollars and twenty-eight cents an hour, uh, based on these fifteen positions here in this chart. So that's going to, uh, increase that current starting salary amount from right around thirty-six thousand dollars to thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars after, after implementation of the, uh, cost of living adjustment and the step increase. If you want to, uh, take an individual position out of here, let's take the deputy position up here, it's highlighted. Right now, the current, uh, starting salary for a deputy seventeen ninety-eight, cost of living adjustment at three percent is going to result in a fifty-three cent increase to the starting salary for that deputy. Um, you're going to have another thirty-two added on to that after that deputy's been here a year as a result of that step. That's going to total an additional eighty-five cents an hour, uh, onto that seventeen ninety-eight hourly rate, and bringing it to eighteen dollars and eighty-two cents an hour. So that just shows you, um, how the, the COLA, uh, proposed cost of living adjustment, as well as the, uh, recommended step increase will impact on, on individual positions throughout the operating budget. Moving right along, almost done. Um, let's talk real quick. You see up the chart at the top? The, um, the chart at the top is representative, uh, of course, of, of the operating costs, there's that forty-eight million again that we've discussed. Now we're moving on down from salaries and benefits to non-salary and benefit-related operating expenditures. We've already talked about them a little bit. Again, they're the stuff, they're everything we need to provide the services we provide. They're the gas, the utilities, the travel and training, non-capital equipment, everything we've discussed, again, non-capital equipment. Everything we've discussed, medical supplies, ammunition, telephone, all the recurring costs that are necessary to deliver the services we provide across these six functions of the budget are included in this twelve point three million dollars. This category of expenditures across these six functions will decrease by two point three percent. Now, there's numerous reasons for this decrease. Number one, you've had gained efficiencies, and those gained efficiencies are going to result in cost savings now, and they're going to continue to result in cost savings in the future. I'm talking about upgrades of tax software that we've discussed previously, that's resulted in less reliance on physical inspections, allows this department to hold its fuel expenditures level with prior fiscal year coming up. It allows us also, moving forward, looking at cost avoidance. The more they, these, these folks right now through this change finder, they don't have to drive to a piece of property to identify the change, they can go look at, at the change finder, through the change finder application, and sit right there at their desktop and find that change. So this has resulted in less reliance on manpower in the future. Organization-wide installation of LED light fixtures in all county facilities, that's going to allow us to minimize the impact of anticipated rate increases in the coming fiscal year. We've had previous replacement of water fixtures in the detention center. That's going to result in a decrease in our water and sewer costs for the detention center in the coming fiscal year. New voting equipment that we purchased in board of elections in fiscal year twenty-two, it's going to result in decreased operating costs in your board of elections. So big part of this reduction is gained efficiencies throughout all departments that are not only resulting in cost savings in this budget, but it's going to result in future cost avoidance as well. Also contributing to these decreases, there, these are some things you've got to keep an eye on. Um, here, you have outside revenue sources. So what I'm talking about here is the computer supplies, for instance. In, uh, last, in this fiscal year, in fiscal year twenty-four, your computer supplies organization-wide are going to decrease by a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, and that contributes to that two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar increase. What you've got to also keep in mind, a hundred thousand dollars of that hundred and sixteen thousand was grant-funded computer supplies that were purchased by Transit in fiscal year twenty-three. They were funded through ARPA and NCDOT grant funding. So while you had that expenditure go away, you had an accompanying revenue source go away too. So that's a net zero on the overall budget. You also have cyclical expenditures or expenditures that are timing-related. You'll notice in your tax office this year, forty-nine thousand dollar decrease throughout your tax office for contracted services. Well, and, and that forty-nine thousand dollar decrease in tax office, of course, just like we looked at those charts, that's going to contribute in to that hundred and ninety-thousand dollars reduction overall in contracted services, that, that contributes to the two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar reduction. But forty-nine thousand of that is because the revow happened. And what you have in, in tax, in the contracted services there in the tax office is, in the years leading up to the revow, the work that is required for the, our re- the revaluation contractor that oversees this revaluation, Kevin Ford does an awesome job for us, does it for Jackson County also. The amount of work that is required of that contractor increases in the years leading up to the revaluation, where it peaks in the revaluation and then it's going to go down again, but it's going to come back, you know, in two more years as we get closer to the next revaluation, that expenditure's going to be back there. Then you got like your board of elections department. Well, your operating expenditures in board of the elections department, yes, they're going to decrease because of this voting equipment, but you also, you have, there's different elections in odd years and even years. You're going to have different demands placed on this department depending on how many elections are coming up in the next year. So those are some examples of some cyclical or timing-related expenditures that might reduce this year, but they might go up next year as well, as well, that we have to keep an eye on when we're talking about this non-salary and benefit expenditure category. You also have volatile line items. Uh, there's seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the detention center budget that is related to inmate care. This is your food service, this is your out-of-county housing cost, and this is your medical cost that are, that's budgeted at two hundred and fifty thousand, I think, for the coming fiscal year. It's either two fifty or two seventy-five. And we've seen in the past, you are one, uh, inmate with a pregnancy, you're one inmate with a, uh, terminal illness, you're one inmate away in the medical expense world of having a big problem. Um, while we got it budgeted at two fifty, if somebody comes in there that's terminally ill, the medical expenses, we've seen them as high as five hundred thousand in a year. So there, there's certain things in there that are volatile and it's just simply out of control, uh, simply out of our control, the, the state mandates that we provide medical care. So, so there's nothing that we can do about those. Nonetheless, through all these decreases, I don't, I don't want it to overshadow the fact that we have still seen increases in the cost of doing business, we're still going to be dealing with those in fiscal year twenty-four. Um, here's some examples, utilities up five point four percent. Fuel cost organization-wide up eleven percent, forty-eight, that's about forty-eight thousand dollars. But your public safety, going back to that demand, where we talked about that demand, public safety's accounting for thirty-seven thousand, four hundred of that forty-eight thousand dollar fuel increase. Supplies, I put this in there, uh, just, just to show the, the level of, of, of which we went through this budget and, and how that we're able, supplies are increasing two point eight percent. There again, we talk about the five percent increase in, in overall inflation. Uh, at two point eight percent, the supply increase remains well below that. Of that twenty-six thousand dollars, two hundred, uh, of that twenty-six thousand, two hundred dollar increase, ten thousand of it is related to medical supplies increase that are, again, simply out of our control, and we have to have those medical supplies for our ambulances. So this supplies line item, it's not a small line item either, it's a million dollars. You're talking about a million dollar line item in here that we've been able to control the cost, uh, increasing only two point eight percent in spite of five percent inflation across the board. Let's talk about capital. The marked portion, um, of this chart in the middle here, uh, is the county-funded pay-as-you-go capital expenditures. In the coming fiscal year, capital expenditures, again, uh, this pie chart on the left, we're still in the services we provide, we're still in that forty-eight million dollars, now we're talking about capital expenditures. So seven point eight percent, uh, of the total cost across these six functions is representative of that three, that's three point eight million dollars in capital expenditures. Again, they're defined as those expenditures that have a useful life of one year or more and cost five, that, cost five thousand dollars or more. This one point five million dollar increase over prior year is representative of a one point two million dollar increase in county-funded capital expenditures. One point two million in county dollars, three hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars in grant-funded dollars, makes up that one point five million dollar increase in capital expenditures among these, uh, among these six functions, which are representative of the services we provide. Let's talk about the capital expenditures that we have in the operating budget. Um, as you'll notice here on the previous slide, I made a note that one point two, and I mentioned it earlier, that one point two million dollar increase is completely offset by the increase on investment earnings, um, that we received as a result of the, uh, funding held in the North Carolina State Department. on investment earnings that we received as a result of the funding held in the North Carolina Capital Management Trust Fund, and it could not have come at a better time. That is because when you look at the one point two million dollar increase in FY24 county-funded expenditures, the very first one listed here, information technology at a total of one point four million in the coming fiscal year, one point three million of that is to, for the replacement of our storage area networks or sands at our primary and disaster recovery sites. So the storage area networks are the backbone of our IT infrastructure. They store, they replicate, and they protect data across all the services we provide. This is everything from your nine-one-one dispatch center, your GIS database, your finance and accounting software, the document storage that we have, your things like in your sheriff's office, like your sheriff's pack, your jail pack, your, your CAD system. Every service we provide in this organization relies upon these storage area networks. And seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred will replace these sands at the primary and disaster recovery site. Five hundred and twenty-four thousand will go toward equipping these sands with the core switches that are needed for them to run. Basically, these core network switches ensure high-speed communication between the sand at the disaster site and the sand at the primary site. They also, they also ensure communication between the end users and these sites as well. Twenty thousand dollars of this, one point three million dollar capital expenditure will go towards upgrading host connections to match this increased speeds that these network components will provide. Now, the need arose to replace this capital infrastructure. Macon County in March of twenty twenty-three, in March of this year, we received notification that end of service dates on all of our storage area network solutions had been revised to January of twenty-four. According to the vendor, this revision occurred due to the closing of a chip manufacturer who was the sole source provider for those components. The revised end of service dates are approximately eighteen months earlier than we anticipated. And to boot with that, through January twenty-four, the service costs are going to double to maintain these systems that we have through January of twenty-four. So our goal is to replace this critical network infrastructure as soon as possible. It is a number one priority as we move forward because everything we have hinges on it, and, and just wanted to point that out as a critical capital investment in the coming fiscal year. And the timing of this was, was less than ideal. I mean, we were notified in March, but similarly, that interest on investment funding, that's why I said that increase in that interest on investments couldn't have came at a better time to offset this critical capital expenditure. Let's go right on down the list just real briefly. Aside from the IT equipment, we'll also be replacing a lift at the garage in the coming fiscal year. We'll be replacing an HVAC unit for the community building, and this is in your budget book as well. HVAC unit at the community building there, the Robert C. Carpenter Building, license plate readers for the sheriff, K-9 housing and storage there for the sheriff as well. Going to replace a Jeep Renegade there in planning, permitting, and development. We talked about the increases in demand we had seen in that department earlier, just substantial. We're going to purchase a new ambulance as well as the equipment to outfit that new ambulance. Talking about a power lift stretcher, a loading unit for the new ambulance, defibrillator replacement, and a ventilator. We're going to, grant funding will enable us, twenty-five thousand dollars of grant funding will go towards a sixty-five thousand dollar paving project over at the Hyatt Road EMS base. We're going to complete, complete that in the coming fiscal year. The fire task force purchased a new hydraulic extraction tool. The animal control officer that we put on will equip them with a vehicle and a dog box so they can carry out their service. Transit services here will replace six vehicles at six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. This is ninety percent grant-funded. Six hundred and six thousand dollars of this six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar expenditure will be offset by grant funding. Here in child health, we'll have a portable wheelchair, portable wheelchair scale. Child dental through, we're going to, we're recommending to go ahead and replace the molar roller dental unit. That is an eight hundred and sixty-nine thou, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollar expenditure that will be offset by five hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars in Medicaid cost settlement revenue that we would recommend replacing in the coming fiscal year. Lastly, as you will recall, in fiscal year twenty-three, we had set aside a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to replace the pickleball courts or to construct new pickleball courts. We used that funding and, and decided first we wanted to complete a master plan there for the Robert C. Carpenter Building, for that park area there before we moved forward with any, with anything. This two hundred thousand dollars has been included in the budget for when the plan is complete by McGillan Associates. Should the board decide they want to move forward with that project, the fund is available. The funding's here to do so at two hundred thousand dollars. It was a hundred and fifty thousand, five thousand dollars last year, but we've accounted for inflation and put a little bit more on there. So now, let's move out of these functions, out of these six functions. We've hit everything there is to hit on. We've covered salaries and benefits, the non-salary and benefit-related operating expenditures as well as the capital. So now, we're getting near the end. We'll move on to education. So moving on to education, I have also included with education the transfers because of that two point one million dollar budget and transfers, two million of that goes towards education in debt service payments. Ninety-five percent of the debt we have is attributable to education debt. Furthermore, this eight hundred and, eight hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollar increase to transfers has been earmarked for future debt service payments related to the Franklin High School project as we have anticipated construction on that project to begin in the coming fiscal year. So that eight hundred and eleven thousand comes from fiscal year twenty-one. We, we had a tax increase in fiscal year twenty-one. Eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars of that was earmarked for the Franklin High School project, and we have previously used it. We used it in this year's budget to fund those architecture fees to keep that project going. Now, as we, we've got to a place with the architecture fees where, for the stadium project, we'll be, we, we have paid for that project through bid release. The, we, we anticipate that moving forward, any, any future payments to the architects will be worked into a, a financing project on the, on the overall loan. So with that being said, we have went ahead and moved that into, into the debt service, that eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars there. We've moved it from education capital into transfers into debt service, but it will nonetheless stay earmarked for debt specifically related to the Franklin High School project. The fiscal year twenty-four budget proposes a nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollar increase to education operations. Eight hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars of this increase will go to the Macon County school system. And while that falls short of the school system's one point five million dollar requested increase in operational funding, it will be vital to the school system in the coming fiscal year. It's going to allow them to address inflation in the cost of goods, personnel, and services. Additional funding will be used to maintain locally-funded teaching positions that are required to meet state class size mandates, provide state mandated salary increases to local, locally-paid teachers and staff. It will increase your supplement pay for your coaches, enhance the science, technology, engineering, and math, the STEM program, as well as expand course offerings in the career and technical education, the CTE program. Seventy-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars of that increase will go to SEC to cover cost increases associated with general supplies, maintenance, and utilities. So before we get off education, let's look at the chart here on the bottom. At the new, at the recommended level for fiscal year twenty-four, that's going to result in an increase to our county per pupil appropriation for current expense. That's a mouthful. County per pupil appropriation for current expense. So in fiscal year twenty-four, the average daily membership of the Macon County schools is expected to increase to four thousand, four hundred and thirty-three students. According to the most recent data that's available from the Department of Public Instruction, Macon County ranked fifty-first out of a hundred and sixteen school districts in per pupil appropriation for current expense in fiscal year twenty-two at two thousand, thirty-one dollars a pupil. So we will now, in fiscal year twenty-four, increase to two thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars a pupil at the recommended level or at the recommended budget level. So where does that fit in? You see here compared to fiscal year twenty-two, the increase there. You see here compared to the state. Currently, the state average for per pupil expenditures for current expense is twenty-four hundred dollars. Our region is seventeen hundred and forty-eight dollars without accounting for small schools and low wealth funding. You have Clay County, Cherokee County, and Graham County all receive funding from the federal government for small schools or low wealth funding, and the impact that it has on this, on this current expense per ADM is tremendous. When you take the regional average without that, it's seventeen hundred and forty-eight dollars a student. When you put that in the regional average, it's twenty-four hundred and fifty-eight dollars a student for the region. So that is the impact that that funding received by those three counties has on the per, current expense per ADM. But nonetheless, I mean, all we can do is look at our appropriation levels, and, and looking at our appropriation levels, this increase, it, I do feel is justified based on the information we have right now. So with that being said, move on to the last slide here. Education capital. Education capital at two point one four million in fiscal year twenty-four. Two million of that will represent, two million, twenty-three thousand of that will represent capital outlay to appropriation to the Macon County school system. What this includes is the annual capital outlay amount of one million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as well as eight hundred and seventy, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars for replacement of the Highland soccer field. The remainder of the capital outlay appropriation, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, will go to SEC for HVAC replacement at their data center at the, for their data room at the Grove Center, as well as replacement of the roll-up door at the National Guard Armory. Real quickly, before we, we move on here, let's look at the, let's look at the bottom slide, the expenditure slide. That was the, the first one you saw. I'm kind of bringing it all back together here now that we went through all this, kind of piece by piece. Now you can see it put ball back together there in the bottom. Of course, the expenditures, Lori, do those two, do they balance? Yeah, it balanced. No, I'm just kidding. But, but so you can see there where the revenues are coming in, the expenditures that those revenues are offsetting. Do want to make one point here, this non-departmental increase, the majority, this four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar increase, the majority of that is due to a four hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollar increase in your contingency fund. Contingency fund this year is going to be at the recommended level of five hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. However, going back to the, one of the first things I said, three hundred thousand dollars, it is imperative that three hundred thousand dollars of this five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in contingency go towards one-time capital expenditures. Now, I know this board, we have discussed numerous, numerous things, numerous projects. We've evaluated numerous projects, both county-related and school-related, and just to say that this, this contingency fund, three hundred thousand of that is appropriate, and we recommend using that for a one-time capital expenditure in the coming fiscal year. So let's wrap this up. The conclusion, fiscal year twenty-four budget is nothing more than a product of the local economy. This budget's been based on conservative revenue projections. We'll continue providing high-quality public services across all functions. We're going to increase operational funding to public education for the first time in four years. We're going to increase capital funding to public education. We're going to provide employees with cost of living adjustments and step increases that are comparable to what we're seeing across the state and region. We're going to maintain our solid financial position. Forty-eight, fund balance at sixty-eight percent of expenditures, forty-two point four million dollars. We are financially solid. Not only does that give us security, it gives us the ability to move forward with major capital projects that we've discussed this fiscal year. Contingency fund at five hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars leaves us well-prepared for any unexpected emergency, as well as giving us an opportunity to move forward with any of those projects, any, that we had discussed in twenty-three or new projects on into twenty-four that we would like to. And lastly, certainly not, certainly not to be forgotten, we will do all of this at the revenue-neutral tax rate of twenty-seven cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. That's as good as you can get it done anywhere in the state of North Carolina, lowest tax rate in the state. How good is revenue-neutral, just real quick? We, revenue, the, the budget rates aren't required to be posted until July one. Nonetheless, there was a survey that was, that went out on, on the list, sir, that some counties and municipalities, two counties and municipalities that were adjusting, that had a revaluation in the coming fiscal year of what their, what their new rates were going to look like. And so out of that, results of that survey, you had respond to that municipalities, we'll do them first. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. You had eleven municipalities respond. The, the average tax rate they will be recommending in their budget is six cents above revenue-neutral average across all those. That's twenty-three point twenty-seven percent average increase above revenue-neutral that will be recommended by these municipalities. You had one county respond. Lincoln County revowed. Their current tax rate is sixty-one point nine cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. They're going to recommend an increase in, in tax rate to seventy cents, eighteen point two five percent. The state average is sixty-six cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. So with that being said, I will again, I, like I opened this message, I'll close the message with the same thing. This is not possible. This budget is, is, it's, it's because of the Macon County Department heads. They're the ones that, they're the ones that have, have put this budget together. They're the ones that, that are saying that this is the tools that they, they need to do their job, that this is what they need to do their job, and I couldn't be more proud to work alongside of them. I couldn't be more proud to work for each and every one of you gentlemen. I appreciate the time tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions. If you've got any questions about this budget, I'm more than happy to answer it. If I can't answer it, I know somebody that can.
Can you tell us the state average again?
Sixty-six cents. Six, it's actually six-six-six. That's how I never forget it. It wa, it was, it was in the, in the previous one. Now, that will all change once these revaluation numbers come up, come out. All that's subject to, all that will change as these new tax rates come out, but, but that's what it currently is.
Well, thank you for the presentation. A couple of things on next agenda items you can address where you're standing there. Take this and digest it because that digestion or indigestion or whatever will precipitate the next two actions. One, we need to set a public hearing on the proposed budget. We have to do that a board meeting ahead. So our next board meeting is June the thirteenth. Deadline for approving the budget would be?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. Keep that in mind. So we will tentatively set the public hearing before June the thirteenth. We'll, we'll call for action on that. Do we need action on that?
Yes, I mean, just go ahead.
Yeah, you can go ahead and say it if that's what you want.
But secondly?
Because we have to advertise in the newspaper that we're having a public hearing.
And you advertise for what's the time, a week, two weeks?
One time, at least ten days prior to the meeting.
Okay. And that will affect the next agenda item, discussion, consideration regarding schedule of budget work sessions. The close, the next budget work session we could potentially have would be ten days from today?
No. You can have it whenever.
You can have one tomorrow if you wanted to.
Just recess and go.
Recession, we would ask that that first one, we have been talking with the architects at the Franklin High School project, there's some very pressing things going on with that, and should we plan on moving forward in this coming fiscal year? We got our financial advisors, they've got, you know, the revenue projections that we were showing y'all in February, all that's changed since the revaluation numbers have came in. We got an additional eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars going into that debt service fund that's going to be able to offset debt service payments that wasn't factored in. So there's a lot of things that have changed that's going to impact the overall numbers of that project and what that number, and what that project looks like financially. So that would be our recommendation is to have them in here as quick as we can to discuss those. So that would be our recommendation is to have them in here as quick as we can to discuss those items.
But those, those numbers are not going to affect the budget?
No. No, they're, well, they could. They, they could potentially.
And the reason I'm moving up to that is, is you gentlemen know we're not, personally, I'm not giving any problem on this. I've got to look at it, I've got to spend some time in it. We do appreciate the presentation, Lori, and the groups that put this together. Tonight, we need to, if you want work sessions, we need to set those tonight.
Well, I definitely want work sessions. Now?
Wait a minute, let's go back to the scheduling of the public hearing. Let's do that first. Pleasure, the board.
Is that the 13th?
13th.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we set a public hearing, 6:13, June 13, the recommended budget.
Have a motion second, discussion. All right, all in favor, raise your right hand, unanimous. And at any time, we can extend that by board action. All right, next item, pleasure, work sessions. Pleasure, the board.
Well, the biggest thing is Monday's Memorial Day. I'd like to have, I'd like to have the weekend to really digest this. And then maybe Tuesday after Memorial Day, set the first budget work session and, and recess as needed. Because this is a lot of, a lot of stuff to digest here. While the county's needs are great, and we have a lot of properties that's in desperate need of some attention.
So you're saying May the 30th?
May the 30th.
We have a architect meeting on the 31st, Wednesday, 9:11, this lady's coming.
That would be on the?
Well, that Wednesday or Thursday? What is that Thursday?
What, which Thursday?
Is that the 6th, I see, let me see, 31st is on?
Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Thursday would be June 1st.
And I believe that's when that, from 9 till 11, is the lady that's going to the architect.
That would be the full board though, right? Is that just your committee?
Yeah.
That's not a full board?
It's just liaisons, isn't it?
Just liaisons.
These liaisons, and then after that, the two commissioners you want to meet with. On what day you got that down for?
It'd be on the, I've got it down for the June 1st. The reason I'm looking at this, I've had, I've got some other family obligations.
I like the way Nene Shield do, we're right down on pads, everybody else. I'm trying to get on his cell phone, man, it ain't working. All right, call me a gentleman.
The only comment I'd like to make is, I'd be more than happy to meet during business hours. If you wanted to call it 10, 11, 12, I mean, just, just a suggestion.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
All right, the, what date?
It's May 30th.
I've got family obligations on June 7th, eight.
A week from today.
If we're going to do it during business hours?
Pardon?
Can, except if we're going to do it during business hours, is there any way to do that back, you going on Monday or Friday?
Well, Monday's Memorial Day. Yeah, well, I mean, we've got very limited time.
Danny, it doesn't have to be, I just, it's inconvenient, no problem.
It could be all for, for me to, on Memorial Day to have a meeting, because we got one for a table a day. It's a memorial party.
No, we won't.
Nothing on the 29th. Okay.
But I'm committed, whatever we come up with, I'll commit to the time, day, makes no difference.
Right now, the suggestion is Tuesday, May the 30th.
Could we start, could we start earlier in the afternoon? Would that work for you, Danny, to start a little earlier than 6:00, or do you have flexibility?
Yeah, and it's after 3:00, yeah.
Okay. So maybe we could start after, early afternoon?
3:00? What, you got 3 o'clock on?
I'm good on that day.
May 30th? 8:00 before you wake more of your meetings.
I report 3:00.
We need to have a meeting.
Yeah, I hear you, the 30th, 3:00 PM.
This is probably the most important and the most critical thing that, in my mind, that we'll do as a, as a board.
Mr. Manager, what's your input?
I work for you.
Well, just tell y'all. His boy had his last ballgame tonight, and my granddaughter had her last ballgame. We're sitting here, this is important. No ballgames next week, though.
No.
But it, this is, this is critical work. We're doing the people's work here, and we want to give it, we want to find who's coming, not that we don't trust, or anybody on anything. We do need to understand, we get asked a lot of questions, and it behooves us to be educated and to educate the public. So May the 30th, at 3 o'clock, in this building, will be our first budget work session.
You want that, and we will, are we going to bring the?
I think the, I think the first one we probably should do is, is the school.
Good.
Start with the big one, work them?
Yep.
We'll bring the architect in and the financial advisor in.
Do we need to bring them in for the budget, to take up budget time?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to hear it for an hour.
We got, we need to, yes, I, I think they're, they have, they're very critical to the, the projects that we're going to be, that we've discussed moving forward with in 24, all of our, like I say, all these things, the, the new tax base, the increased contribution to, to debt service, that's all going to play a role in, in what that financial picture looks like for those projects.
If and when. Everybody got that? Is the public invited to this one?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
It's, um?
Just a side shot there.
Any idea what kind of time on the budget work session with the schools? Any, I mean, because?
However long y'all want to go.
Yeah.
You want to jam two in?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if we need to, or if the?
Set down from 3 to 6? 3 to, what time you good, man, Mr. Shield?
You read those emails?
What, you good, 3 to 6, 3 to 7? Yeah. 3 to 7? And if we can work in there?
I don't know, we've never had one over. You, what are we going to work in? Are we going to, are we going to, I mean, what do y'all want to do?
Do you want to come up if anybody? Do you want to set a time, or just set a starting time and go till?
Well, we have to know who we're going to include on Tuesday.
Okay.
If we can do the school system and, and another big one.
Are we going to go through each individual one?
Each individual?
Department?
I don't know that it'll be each individual department, but there's a lot of questions that I have on.
And how many you want to do the first night, first day?
If, if you got the education.
I think education's going to be.
Education's the biggie, and then you have your? Yeah, and then you have your, the other big one is the emergency services.
Your health and service and your law enforcement, are they?
See, I was going to do all of that, what you say?
Let's do that, let's try to do the school and, and the biggie for the emergency services. That would include the Sheriff's Department and EMS and 911.
Everybody good? Be here 3 o'clock? And if we get tired, we'll just go back. Or get hungry, go eat.
Or we'll have a go order.
Yeah, have to place a delivery order.
We need action on that in council.
Sure.
Pleasure, the board?
I make a motion that we make a work session on May 30th at 3:00 PM, including Macon County Schools and the Emergency Services, Sheriff's Department, and EMS and 911.
Have a motion second, have a motion second, further discussion. All in favor? If elected unanimous, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next one is consideration of fireworks permit application from Nantahala Volunteer Fire and Rescue.
Yes, sir, they have submitted an application. They're doing their normal independent state fireworks celebration. The fireworks are shot from the island in Nantahala Lake. They are planning on doing that on July 1st, taking with the fire marshal and the fire inspector. Everything appears to be in order, would recommend approval.
Got all of the documentation, pleasure, the board?
Thank you, I'd like to approve this presentation.
Second, have a motion second, further discussion. All in favor? Mr. Shield voted for that. Clever, it's unanimous. Any other business?
Is it ZAMBL, Z-A-M-B-E-L-L fireworks, fire inspection company? I must have mentioned the name. Liberty Insurance or that?
Whatever you're looking at there, I'm, I'm just looking at the cover sheet.
Yes, sir, that, that's the actual vendor who will be doing this one.
That's one that's got the liability insurance.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Chairman, my understanding that Mr. Coke is back working, what are the chances of having him and maybe Mr. Morgan or one of the commissioners to go around to all county buildings and properties and start making a list of the much-needed repairs on a lot of these structures? I think, Mike? I think they have a list, don't they?
Yeah.
They have a list of, of in-depth?
I mean, not, probably it's not as in-depth as you're looking for, but, but there, we have, we have compiled a list. We do, you know, our maintenance department does do routine maintenance of all of them, I'll see what we got.
Yeah, because I know Zachary Park Building up there hasn't been maintained since it was built 20 years ago. And it's, it hasn't been painted, the trim's rotten on the windows, windows are rotten, siding's fallen off of it. Roof, screws are sticking up, a dugout roof is rotten. And, and we just need to, in my opinion, get a list of, of these things and start taking care of these buildings and properties that the, that the taxpayers of this county has built and paid for. They are in desperate need of maintenance. And it's not just Zachary Park, it's many buildings that I have, that I have been to. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but it, it's very disheartening to spend taxpayers' money and let these buildings go down.
Well, I'll have to, I'll have to say that our maintenance does a great job. I mean, this building, for instance, right here, I mean, this courthouse was built in 1972. You look at that building over there, it was built in the 50s.
I'm not?
I mean, the maintenance does a great job keeping these building, the buildings maintained. Now, there might be a few circumstances where, that we need some, we need some work on some buildings, but, but I, overall, the average county building's over 40 years old, over 50 years old.
And if we can't build a structure that's over 40 years old and have it still standing, we as a society and building contractors are in trouble.
Right.
And I'm not pointing fingers at the building department. I'm just saying that there's some things out here that needs to be taken care of, and, and it, it needs, I mean, through recreation, everything, it, it's, we got to get this stuff under control. And that's where our taxpayers' monies will be best spent, is taking care of this stuff that they have bought, built, and paid for, and, and, and not ignore this stuff. That's, that's just my, my stance on it. I've been to many, many, many structures in this county, and they're in bad shape. Well, I mean, it's? So?
Hold it up, too.
He's plugging there.
I will.
But I would love to have a detailed list. I mean, look at the Nantahala EMS building, is that, is that fixed now?
Yeah.
Because four years ago, in 2018, I went, ran for office, that roof was leaking. In 2022, I ran for office and that roof was still leaking. That, we can do better than that as a county, and the people deserve, and the paramedics deserve to live in a building that's not full of mold. And, and so in the library, 2018, they were talking about the same thing in Nantahala. 2022, I was running for office, they're still, they were still begging for the, the library to be taken care of. We can do better than that.
We don't have mold in our building now, but that would be it, that's it.
Well, the insulation was hanging down, the, the whole front wall and the whole back wall from corner to corner was leaking. They couldn't even use the office in there because the roof was leaking, and they couldn't leave the computers in there. And so whenever you've got water, and you've got paper, and you've got wood, and it continues to leak, you're going to have mold.
I think, let's get through the, I suggest me, let's get through the budget work sessions, and then certainly?
Well, I think, I think it's going to be important to know some of this stuff for the budget process before it's finalized.
But the community could say?
Do you have a list of what needs to be repaired?
Yeah, I mean, I could get what we have, put something together, but, yeah, that, if we want, I mean, and that would have been good, like, to know before we started into the budget process, like, when we were setting the priorities for the coming fiscal year also, instead of after the budget's presented. But nonetheless, we can do our best to get all the information we can put together, for sure.
But I thought, back to your question there, I thought we already worked on this library and the community facility thing there in Nantahala.
Yeah, well, we have, but I'm just saying, four years from campaigning, from 18 to 22, Nantahala people were still saying the same thing, what they were wanting. It has been addressed. The wastewater treatment plant in Nantahala was for years. I mean, even when Representative Gillespie, when he was on this board, it was every day that thing's going to fail, it's going to fail, it's going to fail. Well, we can do better than this. And that's, and that's what I want to see this governing body to do, is focus on what's very important to the citizens of Macon County, and that's to take care of what they've paid for.
So the 30th is booked up, I mean, the, the agencies that you requested, that's, I'll think, we may be here on the 30th part. That was loaded up, when were you, when are you considering, when, what, are you making a suggestion, or?
For?
The list of assets, the list of buildings?
Well, I think it would be valuable information going through this budget cycle before we start dissecting all the budget and everything else to see where some more money needs to be spent, because?
We always have cap, we always have a fund balance.
Right.
I mean, you don't want to use that as a?
Are you wanting that list for Tuesday?
No, 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 I, I'd just love to have one before we finalize this budget and, and through the work sessions.
We have the, the, we have the CI, the Space Needs Analysis that we conducted in 2019 that's not that old, that is a volume of, of everything on every building we have. That, that, that is the bible for our maintenance department. That's what they use to maintain the infrastructure that we have in these buildings. It's lit, I mean, it lists every component of every building we had, we paid $160,000 for it. And that, that's 2019, so it's a couple of years old, but that, that is there, and I'll be happy to give that to you.
Have you, have you seen that?
I haven't seen it.
That is there, yeah, we got that.
We all received one, the previous board.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll provide that to John.
But I think we're, we're, we're moving in the right direction with recreation, because knowing the tennis, the Franklin High School tennis team plays out there with a bathroom for the men and women that's this wide, and that's what they use for dressing rooms, mud going down the bank towards tennis courts and everything else. We just, and the picnic shelter is, I mean, all these things need to be? We just, and the picnic shelter is, I mean, all these things need to be really looked at and see where we need to spend the people's money. This is the people's government. This is the people's county, and we must take care of the people's assets.
Just be thankful you don't live in Lincoln County.
Well, I mean...
Can't get much for a quarter, can you?
You'd be looking at a safety tax increase.
So, you'll provide him with Space Needs or CIP?
But I will, I will say to this board, I think that the, in my wishes, as far as work sessions, it is going to include a lot of departments of Macon County Government.
You're...
I asked for it in the beginning, to build this budget with all of us together so we could all understand all the government agencies, and it failed for the lack of second, and I'm still not comfortable. I've looked at eight budget cycles through this, and I have great concerns. You know, I'm part of some of this organizations in the county government retired, and I left this, one of these organizations because of the spending habits in there, and I think, and that's solely why I left. And I just want to understand where we can save money, where we can do things better. That was a great presentation, Derek. I mean, I'm not saying anything about what you and Lori did. And once I review this, and I understand, but we're back at a five and a half million dollar increase in this budget over last year. And, I mean, it's, every year, it's been going four or five million dollars, and...
But we've been putting four or five million in fund balance.
Okay, that's right, but that's the people's...
We could have left it flat, and then we could have just put that whole...
I'm not saying anything about this. I mean, I'll dissect it, but at the same time, that six million dollars is the people's money.
I know, and the people's got the first lowest tax rate in the state of North Carolina.
But they have buildings that's falling apart.
That's...
I'm just...
That's not true.
I'll go with you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other businesses meeting?
Chairman Duster, I had to, I know it's, look, this is the secret vote for accounting manager, a lot of our finance department. I just want to say thank you. I really do appreciate you consistently budgeting very conservatively, and your numbers are very conservative. So, I just want to say thank you, and I did think that was a very well presented budget. Thank you.
Any other comments, gentlemen?
3:00 PM, too.
Pardon?
3:00 PM, too.
Yes, sir.
No. Do we have a closed session?
Wait.
Oh, okay. Did you mean I saw?
Yes, we do have a closed session.
Motion.
I make a motion we go into closed session.
Chair?
Yeah, pursuant to 143-318.183 to consult with the county attorney.
Have a motion?
Derek, do, is this going to require action if we...
No, I think it would just...
We...
It depends on how we pay for it.
Depends on, like, possibly, possibly require it.
Do we have a second, gentlemen?
Second.
All in favor, shake your finger, raise your right hand. All in favor?
Anybody wants a candidate? Oh, I already did.
All in favor, shake your finger, raise your right hand. Let's let it unanimous. Pardon?
Thanks, Mike. We've had a public session now. Motion to adjourn.
So moved, Jim.
Motion taken. Discretion. Call in favor. At our meeting next Tuesday night is a special call meeting. Three o'clock. Next Tuesday in this room, a special call meeting for budget discussions.
And we're done with the education and who else?
Emergency, uh... Public safety, yeah.
Education and the...
Thank y'all. Officer...